Call to order, the June 1 meeting, 2016, of the Caribou Planning Board. First item, approval of last minutes, last meeting's minutes.
Motion?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Seconded.
Moving seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. New business, Degal Oil Company diesel pump operations, concept review. And we'll open a public hearing on that at this time, 5:31. Anybody here to speak to that effect?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Tim Royce, and I'm an engineer with BR, Smith Associates, and Prescott. I have Bert Lebec here from Degal Oil Company as well. Our proposal, our application that we submitted is in front of you, along with the documents that we prepared showing the site plan and how the lock is proposed to be used. I think everyone might be familiar with where it is on Route 1. There's an existing tank facility there. You can see the underground tanks for the propane. What the applicant proposed to do is put in a pump island for diesel fuel. There's an existing underground tank now that resides there, so that is the source for the fuel. They currently offer that service at their Bennett Drive facility, so they're going to take that traffic off Bennett Drive, better access for their clients, and it gets that traffic off Bennett Drive. So our request tonight is for you folks to approve that as submitted. We have talked with Mr. Chandler of the city to review the application and answer any questions they may have along the way. We have reviewed the zoning ordinance, and we found that it is a use that is consistent with the way it's zoned. We don't ask for any waivers or et cetera, so we'll certainly answer any questions you may have. Our request now is for the board to approve the information as you have in front of you for the installation of the diesel fuel island.
Does this requires an MDEP permit?
It does, as part of typical installation. And I know, looking through some of the correspondence or things online, it's kind of the chicken and the egg, you know, as far as we can't bring that document to you. It's upon approval of the board, giving the approval to the applicant, then they can get the installation started. And then when it's complete, that's one of the add bill documents that they will have after the installation is complete. So the DEP permit, yes, DEP is involved, but not until the very end of the project when it's completed.
How about the fire marshal?
No fire marshal, no requirement.
No fire marshal. Okay.
Jim, if you wanted to take page, pack of page 10 is the checklist that you would follow in reviewing the completeness, and you just go right down the line, and it is, I would suggest, if you'd like me to read off the bullets, I can suggest an answer, and if there's any discussion, we can stop at each one and...
Please proceed.
Do you guys have that in your packet as well? It's part of the original site design application that you submitted. It's page six of the site design application. It's listed as page 10 in our packet, the way our packet is numbered. So it is in conformance with the comp plan, and there aren't any traffic issues or site access issues, so I would say that those are not applicable or yes, in that it's in conformance or compliance with parking and vehicle circulation, same. Pedestrian circulation is not applicable. Site conditions, all of the remaining, all the way down to existing landscaping, I don't know that you had a landscaping plan?
We did not, no, just no landscaping proposal.
And it's not required by our zoning ordinance, so I would suggest that that is also not applicable. The last one would be the subjective, well, I guess the last two, advertising features. You didn't include a sign for adding any signage?
We didn't with this application, but we have since submitted that to the city, and we work with Tony.
Oh, okay.
And we have an approval for a sign that is code compliant.
So you've done a sign, sign permit application?
Yes, submitted and approved.
Okay. Well, we'll work on internal communication then. That's something, given that this is an active application, we probably should have known about on the other side of the hall, so to speak. Okay, so that satisfies the advertising feature, and then design relationship to site and surrounding properties.
Jim, you went from E through T saying everything, are these items all in compliance, or are they not applicable?
They're either in compliance or not applicable, yes. Unless you all have any questions about any particular one that you want to raise.
Any questions from any members of the board?
In the back?
I mean, most of this was addressed when they added that propane tank anyway for lighting and stormwater and all that other stuff, so...
And none of those were called for in changes to this application, right?
Correct. We've been before twice for the two propane.
Right.
That property's already cited for most everything that they're doing here anyway.
Right. Either it's in compliance or the question is not applicable to this particular application, so...
Going through that part of it, probably shouldn't pose a question for that.
Oh, whether, I guess, well, Chairman, did you have anyone else that was interested? We've received no input at the office. I don't know if there's anyone else who wants to speak to it.
No, okay. Well, we'll close a public hearing and continue this discussion, although Phil McDonough, Jim has informed me that the opening-closing of public hearings is not necessarily required because the entire meeting is public. That was, you know...
I think we're required to have a public hearing for the site design review in case there are other people from the public that...
Yes.
As long as there's an invitation for anyone in the audience to speak on the issue. And, okay, so that would be something that's a better practice.
It is public, yes, but you still have to have a separate public hearing on your site design review. That's according to the ordinance.
Right. So Chairman, you would ask if there was anyone in the audience who wishes to speak besides the applicant and their representative?
Is there anybody? I don't see anybody. Okay, on the following page, Jim, V through Z, are those also not applicable, or...
Yeah, no, none of those are applicable in this case, so...
Okay. I guess the only question that I would then have, this is on the agenda as a concept review, can we, is it, is it possible for us to do concept and final review simultaneous, or do we have to publicly notify, you know, put in the paper, et cetera, and come back? I'm just wondering if we can...
I would suggest to you that, in this case, because this has been advertised twice already, this was advertised for the May meeting and for this meeting, and the letters of notification to the adjacent landowners were sent out 14 days in advance of, well, they weren't sent out 14 days in advance of the first meeting, but they were sent out 14 days in advance of this meeting. So all of the proper notifications and advertisement has been done, and we have not received any calls or raised, anyone that's raised concern. The one property owner that was adjacent to this applicant who raised a question about it before the May meeting was given the opportunity to review all the documents, and they never called back to say that they had any issues or concerns, and they're not here tonight, and they were notified twice of this meeting. So, given that, and the fact that it was publicly advertised for two separate meetings, I believe you'd be within your rights, unless, Steve, you have anything that you want to add? Would that be, would we be out of line? Do we need to hear it again?
There are situations where applications had gone through a planning board concept approval. There is a formal appeal period, 30 days, where anyone that may choose to contest the approval of the process, either in Superior Court or at Municipal Appeals or Appeals. So the 30 days between the concept review, the review for the planning board, but also review for the community, to get the word out...
Right.
That 30 days then allows anyone to request that appeal.
Okay.
So when you get in, I think you probably find a lot of this in the notice on the agenda, I think you're going to have something about planning board legal issues. In that three-ring binder that's available from State Planning Office or the replacement of the State Planning Office, it actually gives some case studies of municipalities that didn't hold to that 30-day appeal period, where, for whatever reason, the applicant would go ahead and commence their project, and then to find out that the appeal would be, the applicant would lose the appeal, and projects would have to be actually torn, torn down. So it is a legal issue to give them 30 days, and the intention's not to hold up the applicant, but if by chance there was someone in the community or someone that didn't agree with the project and some just meaning or just reason, there is potential for that appeal within that 30-day period. So it's just a safety for the planning board to...
So in a nutshell, your recommendation is that we not combine the concept review with the final review?
It's actually written to give a 30-day period.
Right.
So the city's ordinance, I believe, requires a 30-day separation.
And that's my question, is it, does it read that way? From my understanding is that it reads that the code officer can issue an approval after the board has reviewed it, and he has up to 30 days to do that. So we had submitted it anticipating last month's meeting.
May.
Right, in May. And so certainly it's been here at the city for 30 days. And obviously, we're, the sun is shining, so that's, that's where we're coming from, is, you know, I understand, you know, we certainly need to do things right, but our understanding is, is that we could, if it's okay tonight, we can move on to the final approval with the code officers having had it for 30 days, and we have, so that's where we're coming from.
The application itself, the site design application itself, calls for two presentations before this body. The review of your application consists of at least two presentations to the planning board and possibly additional presentations until all required information has been provided. And a performance bond may be required subject to the approval of the project. So we didn't have you before us in May because we didn't get the application in time to get the letters of notification out to the adjacent property owners, which is when we did send them out what raised the concern, because one of those property owners protested are moving forward at the May meeting with your presentation. So that was the reason that we went ahead and waited and put it on here for June for the concept design. So that follows our code, that follows the ordinance, and that follows the letter of the law that Steve just described. So, you know, I think that you'd be putting yourself in jeopardy if you were to begin work on the project without our final approval, if we don't give you the final site design. If we approve the concept design and we wait for 30 days, I guess, I see it happening two ways. We either have you come back and make another presentation at the July meeting, if we scheduled the July meeting, and tentatively we have, right?
Yep.
Or we approve it, and then you just wait 30 days, and if we don't have anybody object or appeal, then you're free to move forward without having to come back before this body.
Is there a third option?
I don't know what's behind door number three, Phil. I'm not, I'm not aware of another option. What are you suggesting?
The final approval. Now, we submitted things for the May meeting in discussion with city staff of when some of those deadlines are.
Right.
And we met those deadlines and come to find out it didn't allow the 14 days, but we were working under the information that we had, so we had information here in May, and we're back here now 30 days later, and it's going to be potentially another 30 days. I mean, we're not trying to be, we're not trying to, you know, argue, just completing our case here, 30, a month is...
Does it have to be a whole other 30 days, or do they just have to come before us twice?
From what I heard Steve say, he...
The application says twice, the code, the city ordinance actually says 30 days.
30 days.
Yeah. The city ordinance, the way it's written now, says 30 days. And part of this problem or dilemma, if you will, is that we're in the process of reviewing and revising that code, but for now, the code is what it is. So we could, in six months, have a different code that wouldn't require these same timelines, or we could provide opportunities for waiver of those timelines, given the circumstances, particularly as they exist with you all.
Let me ask a couple questions. Have we received any additional information that we did not have for the May meeting? Is the only reason this was not on the May agenda is because of the 14-day requirement?
The only reason, yes. The only reason this didn't meet the criteria for getting on the May agenda was that we received the application materials the day that we would have needed to send letters to the applicant, to the adjacent landowners. So we didn't have the opportunity to do review and/or submit, have any conversation, so...
The application was complete?
Yes, the application's been complete since the day of submitted.
Prior to the May.
Yeah, no additional information. We, the only thing additional that we've received, candidly, were a couple of comments that I included in the cover memo, one of them being from the chief, fire chief, who was significant, he was in big-time support of this project and the concept, and the fact that it was going to assist the city in a number of ways, getting big truck traffic off Bennett Drive, moving it to a location that's away from the downtown area. So there were, the only thing we've received has been, the only comments we've received from anyone were either questioning us about the timeline for the applicant moving forward. That was by an adjacent landowner, and they wanted more time to look at the application, which they were given. They've had 45 days now to look at the application, and have received no other calls or comments from them, or anyone. And then the positive endorsement of the application from the fire chief.
So they've had 45 days, can we wait 15 days? I mean, give them another 15 days, they are 60 days.
Well, candidly, if you, if you, they've had 60 days from the May to the, well, no, from May to June plus 15, yeah, so 15 more days. I'm not sure that would satisfy the code the way it's written. Steve, what do you think?
That's my concern, is that the way it's written...
Yeah.
And if somebody has already piqued an interest in it, regardless of whether or not they've acted on it, there still lies that potential issue down the road that they could come up and say, whoa, 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 you know, you guys approved this, and...
Have any of the adjacent landowners approached you all with any questions?
We have not, I don't believe, or you, no.
No.
Neither of us have.
Okay.
So I guess I'd like to clarify the two options, okay? Option one is that we only approve the conceptual hearing, and we ask you to come back in 30 days or wait 30 days, and that's, you know, taking no risk whatsoever on anybody's part.
Right.
Option two is that we give you the final approval, okay, in which case, I guess I want to clarify what the city's exposure or risk is, if there is any, is there any risk to the city, or is it just risk to the developer, that if somebody does step forward and say, wait a minute, planning board acted prematurely, we're going to put a stop to this, at which point, at that point, my question is, if there's any liability issues, who do they sit with? Do they sit with the developer, or do they sit with the planning board? Because if they sit with the developer only, then I would suggest, then it's the developer, you know, who has the risk of moving ahead, crossing their fingers, that nobody's going to complain. But if it puts the planning board or the city of Caribou at risk, then we probably cannot oblige the city, I mean, we cannot put that on the city.
I mean, it would be my opinion that the city planning board would be liable for making an approval outside of the statutory code requirements by which we're supposed to act.
Well, that pretty much...
And that would be my opinion. I'm not an attorney, we don't have an attorney, city attorney representing us.
Pretty much, I think, sounds with what Steve said, Steve Wentworth, our former...
It would be considered what was an administrative appeal, and if someone were to bring that appeal forward, give it to the Board of Appeals to the city or Superior Court, the city would, if it were found that the appeal was justified, the city would then have to stop the project. If anything, what would, the city would incur the need to bring in the zoning board of appeals and hold an appeals hearing to listen to the complaint. So again, it would, so it is an administrative, and many municipalities don't have a conceptual review and a final review, they merely have a review.
So you're saying that our process is not the standard, it goes the extra mile, and that's one of the things that we want to change, but that that change has not occurred yet?
Many of these ordinances are all the same, other towns will have the same wording, being that the towns actually purchased the ordinances and had not done the adjustments to make it work properly for that.
You say, many of the towns are the same, one hearing or two hearings?
What we see here in Central La Rousteck, many of the towns purchased the same ordinance back around 1980.
Okay.
So the wording in Limestone and Caribou and Prescott, other towns around that have an ordinance are quite similar.
You have a question?
I just wanted to offer, when we permitted for the propane plant, a couple times, we were able to do it in one hearing, and, you know, there was really no objection on the land use and land owner, you know, nearby landowners. There's really not, there's nothing that really is an exception to the rule here. I think we're following fairly well for what the property allows. And I guess the only thing I'll add, because of the available contractors and tank installers, licensed tank installers, we can't get going on, if I can't start planning this beautifully, or looking to remodel our Caribou Dog's place location here this fall, we would configure it the way it is now and probably not do that project on the Caribou, the Prescott road. So that would keep the same traffic on Bennett Drive and whatnot, so...
Are you saying that if we don't say yes tonight, that it doesn't happen?
Probably not, because I just can't find contractors available to do that.
Now, if we did say yes tonight, how soon before there would be, before you would be incurring expense and doing something out there?
I certainly have to sign some contracts, put some deposits, get some equipment ordered.
Is it possible that might take 30 days?
It will take 30 days before things start, but at that point, I'm committed to the contractor and have given them some deposits, and they've ordered some equipment.
Your notice to proceed has been issued.
So then, so then, that's where the risk lies, because you may not actually break ground on it for 30 days, which puts you in time for the next meeting for us to say, you have our blessing. The only thing is, if, at the next, because from what I understood from our two code enforcement people here, that if we go ahead, we're exposing the city to some liability of not following our own rules. If you proceed but don't break ground, if nobody shows up here in 30 days, you're good, but if somebody does show up, but then, now let me, okay, let's play this out. If somebody does show up and say, well, I don't want that to happen, okay, but the fact that they are 100% in compliance with everything, we would be hard-pressed, this body would be hard-pressed to deny them the permission to go forward.
Right.
We still need to give them the opportunity to come in and contest it.
Yes, but...
They should have been at this meeting, though.
Well, but even if they weren't, and, but what I'm saying is, if whoever isn't here tonight comes in 30 days, and they jump up and down and say, we don't want this, we don't want this...
You can still approve it.
We can still approve it because there's nothing that is violation of zoning or anything else.
No, the project is sound.
Okay, and so, I can't say you have no risk...
Yeah.
But I think that your risk would be minimal. I mean, I mean, I think we're interested in seeing this happen, take some traffic off of Bennett Drive, but we're bound by our own time constraints, and so I think tonight, all we can, I mean, it's my opinion, I think all we can do is give a conceptual approval, and, you know, it's your decision to proceed, to order your equipment and get everything going, just don't break down ground for 30 days and come back and get the final at 30 days, and on the 31st day, start digging. I mean, that's, that's a company decision, Degal Oil Company decision.
I mean, and, I mean, I don't want to sound like I'm not for the project, because I think the project has all kinds of potential, I think it's a great idea, but I just think as a body, we need to cover ourselves as well, you know, and like they said, you know, it's not like it's probably not going to happen, but we need to give those people the opportunity to speak, regardless whether it's at the last minute or not, in order to make this work.
Obviously, when we submitted this, we thought we were timely and whatnot, and that's certainly not, you know, actually...
Yeah, well, I think you were, yeah, I think you were like one or two days late in time for us to...
Just for us to get the letters to the...
To get the letters to the abutting landowners.
That is a 14-day requirement. The notice in the paper is a seven-day requirement, and we weren't able to turn it around the same day.
And actually...
Have the letters of, have the letters of notification go.
And when you, if I understand correctly, when you suggested that at the May meeting it be held, you were reminded of the 14 days by an abutting landowner?
Oh, yes. Yes, the abutting landowner raised that exact question.
So the abutting landowner was looking at it, probably wanted a little time to evaluate and study it. The fact that they're not here tonight indicates they're, they don't have an issue, or I suspect that, I can't say with 100% certainty, but, and that's why I suspect that even if they come to a meeting 30 days from now, if they come, you know, we still see lots of reason to pass this, to approve it. Anybody want to make a motion, as far as conceptual approval?
I move that we approve it as a concept review and slate it for the July meeting that we give a final site review.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Hope you understand our predicament.
I do. It's just when we did the propane plant, we were down to one...
Well, we probably weren't, we probably weren't following proper procedure at that time, you know, this is...
How long ago was that done?
Was that the expansion?
The expansion was done last, within the last year.
Yeah, the expansion.
And then the original one was about four years ago.
2010, then 2015, all of those were what, 20 years?
I think Austin helped us with that, right?
Well, he would have been here in 14 or 15, he wouldn't have been here in 2010.
Yeah.
We just finished the tank aspect, but not too long ago, right?
Late last fall, we still have the painting to do, but it's scheduled to be done.
I'm, I'm, well, the decision is yours.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
All righty.
Okay, next item of new business, Griffin used auto site design. And we'll open a public hearing on that at 5:59 PM. Anybody here to speak to that project? Identify yourself for the record.
I'm Keith Griffin, the owner of the building. The owner, tire boss. Mr. Griffin brought this by today. It's a letter from the State Farm Officer's Office to the city, to him, indicating that they did not require an inspection of the building, and that they would defer to the fire chief. And the fire chief had a conversation with Mr. Griffin, and I'll let him speak to that.
He said that kind of supersede them, and I just threw my hands up, and I said, okay, he's supposed to get ahold of GM.
Yeah. And I didn't receive any objections from the fire chief, and he's out on vacation this week and last week, so...
He's aware of it, or he's not?
Oh, no, he's aware of it, yeah.
He's aware of it, and he has no objection?
And he deferred, he deferred to the fire marshal's office. When the fire marshal's office, when they, you submitted that application, the building access...
You can give him a check, and I said, no, we can't accept it because it's too small.
Yeah, they just, they just didn't feel like it was warranted their time and effort.
They basically say...
They require a permit, or they, they returned your check.
Yeah, they returned their check.
Yeah, so...
So basically, they're non-applicable.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, this was looked at, at the May meeting and determined to be incomplete for a, uh, design review, site design review.
We were waiting the Fire Marshal's office.
Yeah, that's-
That was what we were waiting for, to hear from the Fire Marshal's office.
Is that the only, I thought those were a number of items that were absent, that were not there, or is there more?
Well, the applicant, the applicant didn't submit engineered drawings-
Okay.
That, that the application requires, but there wasn't a reason for them to submit anything in, in addition to what we've received already. I, I, I take that back, there was one question that was, that was raised, I believe, about the interior, the breakup of the interior of the building, not having been displayed on the map, on the drawing. The layout of the interior, the, the bays and the office area. That level of detail wasn't provided.
Does the facility-
I think I gave you a copy.
No. No. Yes, you did. Okay. I didn't make copies of this, but he did provide the building, this is the bays and the office area right in the center. So, that's the additional drawing information. I can make copies of it if you would like, have copies.
Well, we'll just each look at it for-
Okay.
A few seconds.
Your time's up.
Is that what you sent to the state as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So you have four bays, an office and a storage room. Is there a bathroom anywhere on the premises?
There is, we removed it to put the office space in and we're relocating it, 'cause it was in the wrong area.
Okay.
Common's all there.
I couldn't find anything in the code. Steve, do you know of anything in the code that would require an automobile, sales, service dealership type facility to have a public restroom?
Uh, not, not only for the public, but for people that work there.
Okay.
So they have a place to do their business.
Right, okay.
Rather than, you know, around bathrooms.
Well, yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
So, with the requirement to have a restroom, it doesn't necessarily have to be a public facility like a food, food and beverage requirement. Food and beverage facility is required to have X number of women's and men's restrooms, that kind of thing. That doesn't apply in this case.
Actually, tables or charts that list how many journals and tables.
Right, yeah, based on the square footage type of services.
No, but any, any place that's open, uh, employees working in the building, people that'll work in there, uh, you could have a facility to take care of these employees.
Okay.
But there's nothing stating that has to be anything for the public, right? It can just be private only, correct?
I believe so.
Okay.
So, Kip, do you have, I mean, other than the information that we've been given, you don't have any other, uh, information, or that, that's basically it?
No, that's basically it.
Okay, and I, I just need for the record to ask if there's anybody else here that wants to speak to this project? And I don't see any, so we're gonna close the public hearing at six oh four. And, uh, Jim, uh, you wanna run us down through the, uh, the design review criteria or is, or is basically everything good to go per your evaluation?
Yes, I mean, the, the city code was changed to allow for, for automobile dealerships, that's actually, in all other zones, just a simple code enforcement officer approval. It would not be something that would even be required to come before this body. But because of the location of this being in R three, it was required to come before this body, at the actual site design application. That was, so it was only because of where the zoning, it was where it was located in the zone that's located in, so.
Is this building on the corner of the Westgate Road, no?
No, no, that's CJ's.
Okay.
It's just, it's just west of there.
This is, this is just, this is just, well, west or south on the access highway?
Closer to Caribou.
Closer to Caribou, yeah, by, I don't know, a quarter mile?
Yeah.
Not far.
Not far.
You can see one from the other.
Yeah.
There's a couple houses in between.
More of that.
Before it was a car wash, was it a-
Yes.
Auto dealership?
No, it was just a car wash. It was a, years ago, Cody's Auto Repair Shop is there.
So, so it was a garage initially, 'cause I knew that it wasn't, it wasn't created as a car wash, that was a conversion.
Back in seventy-two, if I remember right, Ford ID, they turned it into a car wash.
I just know that, I, you know, it doesn't, okay.
I almost remember them selling mobile homes there or something, years ago. That was across the street.
It's across the street, yeah, okay.
So, back to the design criteria, uh, you're saying that typically, we wouldn't even go through this-
Yeah, none of these, none of these are applicable for this.
If it wasn't in, in R three.
Right.
So, uh, so then, back to the same question as with Daigle Oil, uh, we simply approving a design review, a concept review, tonight?
This will be the final, 'cause we-
We did have, we did have this on the agenda for concept review in May.
Can we raise those questions?
We had some discussion about it. We didn't have Kip or, or anyone else here to speak to the project. So that was a reason, based on the fact that we wanted more information, we felt like the application wasn't complete and it needed the Fire Marshal's sign off, we would table it. So we didn't actually officially approve it from a concept perspective.
Now-
At the May meeting, we tabled it. I believe that's what the minutes read.
Was the fourteen day requirement that wasn't satisfied for Daigle Oil, was it satisfied for this project?
Yes.
It was. So conceivably, his application was more timely and-
We had it sooner, yeah, we had it for a longer period of time.
Except he didn't appear twice.
Right.
Well, it didn't appear, it, it, it made, it made the agenda twice.
Yeah, it was discussed twice, it was discussed on the agenda, I'm not sure if there's a precedent for having a-
The minutes stated after review, uh, the board decided the application was insufficient for concept review, and that we moved to table it until the June meeting pending more information.
Okay. So then the rule, the same rule would apply here.
Yep.
That we just did, we would approve it for concept and refine, and put it on the June, the July agenda for final site design review approval. And again, assuming that there's not gonna be anyone that's gonna materialize in the next thirty days, it hasn't materialized in the last sixty.
The wording of last meetings, minutes, pretty well establishes that.
Yeah.
We need to change our rules.
Yes.
I would, I would suggest that the rules are, were put in place for a reason, and at some point, they wanted to have more time allotted for review and more opportunities for the public to speak to these projects. But, um, in, in the, in these two instances anyway, I don't, we haven't had anybody objecting and certainly it's a matter of protocol that we're following as opposed to-
Right.
Um, any doubt about the value or the, um, soundness of the, of the actual project. The projects aren't raising anybody's concern, it's just following our own rules. So, as far as the timing goes.
This, I, I hear what you're saying about the rules were put in place for a reason, but then when I look at the certified business friendly designation on the Welcome to Caribou sign, I, I feel that we're failing that.
But being business friendly doesn't mean that we need to make special rules for being business friendly. I mean, we have the rules set in place for what we need to do in order to make things work, and there's a process to it. So, that shouldn't have any impact on being business friendly or not. I mean, and no offense to Mr. Griffin, but had he been here last month, this would've been an approval, not just a concept review. So, by him not attending last month's meeting, um, this isn't, there, you're gonna push him out another thirty days.
I wasn't informed that I had to be here.
Yeah.
I was this time.
Yeah.
He said, oh, I think you should be here. Okay.
You know, I mean, and, and like I said, I didn't mean any offense to you that, in that way, but I mean, had you been present this last meeting, then this would've been able, at the final site review-
I would've been here, but-
And we would've, and we would've been able to, you know, approve it.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I move that we slate this for the July meeting for a final site review and-
So your, is part of your motion include approval-
Approval of the concept and, and slate this for a final site review for the July sixth meeting.
A second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
So I have to come back in July?
Yes.
And it doesn't preclude you from doing anything?
Okay.
Continue to go, work on the bathroom, fit, work on the office that you were working on, yeah.
Well, I gotta get ahold of Stephanie Bollier, because she has to have approval before she can start to make work out of the guest of her license. That, that's what your licensing is, just to sell your vehicles.
Right, right, yeah. That's a difference here, first, right.
Well, right, but you can-
I mean, I don't know if, I don't know if you-
This is the play out.
I don't know if you tell Stephanie that, you know, your concept's been approved, you know, but it just hasn't met final approval yet, you know?
Yeah. Is there any objective in thirty days, or?
What's that?
Would there be any objective in thirty days?
Objection, objection.
Objection?
Well, I mean, I-
Unless he comes in.
I think it's just like the Daigle Oil one.
Yeah, they can come in and object, and this body can still approve it.
Okay.
Yep.
Is that meeting dated?
July sixth.
Is it the sixth?
Yep.
On the calendar right behind Phil.
Yeah, and that's in the-
It looks like the sixth from here.
-package two, which we were gonna discuss.
Yeah, it is the sixth, okay. Well, you need to come back on July sixth.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um-
Did you need this original back?
No.
Okay.
Okay, and, and we've been notified by one of our members that, uh, he has to leave at this time, and so we will not be taking up old business, uh, and I call for-
Well, I thought you meant somebody was getting done.
Well, is that what I, did I use the wrong words? Uh, when I say leave, I mean this meeting. So, uh, I guess I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we table the old business till our July meeting and that we adjourn.
I thought the July business was gonna be key. Well, let's, we can throw it on the agenda and decide at that time, right? Because the first two items on the July meeting are gonna be-
The same two first two items as this, except-
And except I expect they're each gonna take less than one minute.
Okay.
And so they're gonna be real quick, so unless there's more projects that come to us, you know, and depending on what else comes forward, I mean, if there are other projects, certainly we'll look at them, but if no other projects come forward, then all we'll have is old business and we can take it from there.
Right. And the information, the items that I provided you are informational, and, and I think, given that the only other business that I was gonna suggest would be, um, well, there were two things that I was gonna raise for other business. One was tomorrow night, the two of you, Michelle and Phil, are joining me to go to this planning board training that's being offered by MMA.
Yep.
That's the other business item, and then the, um, I was asked by a member of the staff today to, to remind this body that the school budget was being discussed over at the middle school at seven o'clock this evening.
She caught us on the way through.
Okay, there you go.